Good evening, welcome to the City Council Meeting on Wednesday, April 17th, 2019. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ted Connaught, here, Salem Derby.
President.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Bill Lynch.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Owen Zerat.
Here.
Could we please say, and for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
Through the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, could I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of April 3rd?
No move.
Second.
A motion, second for April 3rd minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? No, okay, motion passes. Public speak time, if there's anyone here from the public who'd like to address the council for something other than what's on the public hearings, please, as your opportunity, just come to the podium and state your name and address. Okay, it doesn't look like...
Michael Budnik.
If you could just go up to the podium, please.
Oh, sir.
And just say, for the record, your name and address, please.
Michael Budnik, Nine Pomeroy Place in East Hampton. I yield my time if Councilman Gomez is going to address this later? Or should we address it now?
You can do it now, but I cannot answer you anything now.
Oh, you can't, you can't say anything to me?
Right, yeah.
Okay. I would like to bring up before the council the problems at, on the Pomeroy's, specifically at Nine Pomeroy Place. It is the only dirt road located downtown that is maintained by the city. It is within sight of one of the major businesses in the area, East Hampton Savings Bank, is in horrid condition, remains in horrid condition. Over and over again, I have petitioned the city council, I have sent notes to the mayor, asking that you pave that road, or at least maintain it properly, because it's only graded maybe once or twice a year, and right after it's graded, we get potholes all over the place that make it look like a moonscape. It is essentially a mudscape. There's very little gravel on the road, very little gravel is put down, not frequently. I moved there a year ago, it has been graded once. I don't understand how a dirt road exists in the middle of downtown East Hampton in this day and age. There are five homeowners on that street, as well as a large rental unit that's very well-kept. It's a terrible eyesore, and it's a blight on the city.
Great, thank you for the comment. So it sounds like you've been in conversation with, with Council Gomez?
There's a couple of the council people here, just sending them information, and I was told it might be brought up tonight. I wasn't sure whether I should do it here at the podium, or whether it was going to be brought already on the docket.
Yeah, let me just explain, so what we did tonight is public speak time, and the reason why we can't say anything is because by open meeting laws, someone else in the community may not know you're going to bring this up, so we're not really allowed to deliberate it. But you're welcome to say what you want now. Now that Council Gomez understands it, then he can talk to you and put together requests to have that looked at, and that would enter the whole city council process. The only other suggestion I might have for you two is have, contact the Board of Public Works, because they also oversee that.
Already done.
Already done.
Several times.
Okay, so hopefully between the two, we'll get some resolution to that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to address the council for something other than what's on the public hearings? Okay, communications, elected boards and committees, I don't know of any unless any of the councils have any comments, or Council Rist?
The CPA I would like to mention is having its open, annual open meeting tomorrow, and all the people in the community are invited, who, especially those principals who use the CPA to fund their various projects, like our planner, Park &amp; Rec, and all of the other groups that are out there, Fort Boe housing. It'll be in this room tomorrow night at 6:30, and it's required by the CPA agreement that we have this annual meeting, and we put forward a plan, which we update every year, of the projects we're looking at. So I invite everybody. Also, of important note, I just called, talked to Representative Carey, out of the House, finally, Ways and Means Budget, put a proposal in the budget to increase the match for the CPA. I urge all the councils to write a letter to the House, the Speaker, so that that, he thinks it'll fund, Dan feels that it will be funded by the House, but especially with Senator Harmison, who's been a, I'm not sure where he stands on it, but we need this done, and I'll say why. If we get a 50% match, that'll practically triple the amount of money we get from the state. So that I can inform everybody, if our, just to use a figure, $400,000 we get in tax funding for the CPA every year from property tax, then we would get $200,000 from the state, instead of what is now, I think it's like 17% or something like that. We need this increase, it hasn't been increased in, what, 15, 20 years? And the main problem that I see coming forward with us is we all are in favor of the renovation of Old Town Hall, to make it a very big draw for the community, for a new performance art space. That is going to require bonding, and that bonding will cost a lot per year. With this match increase, it makes it easier for this council and the committee to move on that, to be able to fund that without affecting other projects that might come forward, because that'll be a lot every year. And that has been my goal, to try and get this increase, so I ask all of you, if you feel as strongly as I do about the CPA, that you contact Senator Harmison, individual letters will be great, and make sure that he's, I think he's on Ways and Means for Senate, let's get it done. If we can get this done, and that project won't be, a major project like that, and other projects that come forward to the CPA, won't be hindered by a lack of funds.
Thank you.
Councilor Connaught.
Yeah, I'd also like to announce, thank you for that preamble, I'd like to announce the annual meeting of East Hampton Media, will be on Monday, April 29th, at the East Hampton Media Studios. Everyone is welcome to come and get an understanding of the situation with the FCC, as well as some other, some other issues, and get an understanding of our annual report out from East Hampton Media. So hopefully we'll see everyone there. It's at 6:00 PM in the East Hampton Media Studios.
Thank you.
I gotta get some additional, Councilor Zerat?
Thank you, President.
There's a Connaught mission.
Connaught. As you all know, I've mentioned here a few times in these chambers, East Hampton, as a unofficial, not necessarily city-affiliated contingent, will be marking, marching, not marking, we might mark something, but marching in the, the regional Northampton Pride Parade on Star Wars Day, May 4th. The registration to, may the fourth be with you.
Okay.
The regis, the, the registration for the contingents closed, we initially had signed up for 40 people, we had to expand that, I think we have close to 70 people marching, which is great. So for those of you who weren't able to sign up, sign up for next year. There's going to be a big after-party, I'd like to, we're going to be putting East Hampton on the map for Pride Weekend, same day, 4 o'clock to 10 o'clock at East Hampton, at Abandoned Building Brewery. It's also kind of, kind of a bit, be a soft opening for their new space, and I'm really happy that they, the breweries have supported us in this, in this venture. We've raised close to $2,500, which is great, there'll be t-shirts for sale, we're doing pint glasses and some other things, too, as well. So I hope to see you all in some capacity. I've spoken to the mayor, and I'll probably be sending her an email in the next few days in regards to city support around this issue, in the form of some sort of public support of Pride Month, and flying the Pride flag over City Hall. So that's that, hope to see you all there. And then also briefly, there's a new group forming that I'm proud to be a member of, the functioning name currently is East Hampton Neighbors, we're looking to see if we might modify that. It's basically building a volunteer network to assist people 55 and older in the city, so that they can age in place, helping them with things like grocery shopping, and home repairs, and bringing people to appointments, and organizing activities. There will be a meeting for that at the, oh, here, at the municipal building, 50 Payson, on May 2nd, 6:30 to 7:30. It does not necessarily say what room.
It's here.
It's in these chambers, thank you. I'll announce that the day before, I'll say, I believe, we have a meeting the day before. So that's all, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, we'll see if we can get one report in, oh, no, sorry, Mayor Communications, Mayor LaChapelle, I almost skipped you, sorry about that.
Good evening, everyone. I have a bit tonight, but I would, I would like to, one, just quickly say, on the CPA matter that has been introduced into the House, I have signed a letter of support and advocacy for that proposal, along with fellow mayors in western Massachusetts. So I was hoping to have a copy of that, but once I do, I'll enter it into the record, and plan on going to Boston to testify to that effect, and waiting to see what the Senate has, has to hold on that issue. At this time, my first item before you, I would like to actually call up members of the respected unions in our city, as well as the retirement board, to read joint announcement around 21 and 22. So if we... I will also thank the Nuttleman children for bearing with their father's responsibility. It's very nice. I hope they get ice cream. So that saying, I am presenting to the council today, request to withdraw section 21 and 22 formally, and to let you know that the city has reached individual agreements with each of the city's unions regarding such changes, and it is unnecessary at this time for city council to adopt the above-mentioned statutes. The Hampshire County Group Trust voted to modify the city's health insurance plan by adopting higher copays for certain services, the increased copayments helped to offset anticipated increase in premiums. The city has agreed to share the premium savings with our employees and retirees, which is reflected in the agreement, agreements negotiated with our unions. In light of the negotiated agreements with our union employees, the city again does not need to adopt general laws, Chapter 32B, Section 21 and 22, and respectfully request that the council note my withdrawal of the original request to adapt those statutes, and take no further action on this matter. I just want to acknowledge on the record, folks who sat around the table with me, Nellie Taylor from the East Hampton Educational Association, Andrew Bel, Bellew, yeah, that's what he gets for not coming, Eric Alexander from the police force, Clay Weggart from DPW Labor, Greg Nuttleman, Jim Heza, Carl Williams from DPW Supervisor, and Greg Gagnon, and Jason Dunham from FIRE, as well as Kathy Dunham and Jim Dunham, representing members of the IAC, and also our retirees. I would cede the microphone to any members of this group that would like to also comment on this agreement.
Councilors and community members, I'm Nellie Taylor, I live in Florence, but I'm the president of the East Hampton Education Association. I would like to thank the mayor for agreeing to sit down at the table, saving the taxpayers of East Hampton time and money in lawyer fees. We did a successful coalition bargaining, it took about two and a half hours, and I think that the process yielded a beneficial agreement for both sides of the table. So that is the update from my point of view, and I am incredibly proud to stand with the coalition of labor members, retirees, and IAC members, as the mayor makes this announcement.
Thank you.
Nobody up?
No, none. Well, thank you all very much, thank you for the comments. And, and I retract the statement that Officer, what? Bollier. Bollier, actually was in the room, and I, regardless, I still can't pronounce his last name, but I'm going to work on it. Thank you.
Just, just a question for you, mayor?
Yes.
There was a figure, can you give me the particulars of the sharing of the, of the savings, is it 35%? Or what is the percentage?
It is, we, we actually work more on premium holidays, so in G...
Oh, it's a different kind?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
But, yes, it ended up a little higher, we split them out, we can get that.
So it's similar for every?
Everyone has the, yes.
The same thing?
Yes.
If that could be available to the city council, I'd love to see that.
Sure.
Is that allowed? I mean, it's public record, but?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I will remove the agenda item, grant finances report.
I have a quick question for you, mayor, will this savings also be shared with the pay plan employees?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And they were included in the conversations, the table was round and full, everyone was represented.
Great, very good. Thank you. And thanks, everybody, for all your hard work.
Joe?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Kuzinski has a question.
I would like to thank each and every one of you, the mayor, and all the union representatives, for making this happen for our community on your own, working it out together. Very proud of the process and the result. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there more, Mayor Communications?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I was just going to say, with public, I mean...
Did you have quite a bit?
Yeah. It was a busy night.
Well, I mean, it's your, would you rather keep going? I mean, we've been late before.
Counsel's pleasure.
Go at it.
All right, here we go. Okay, so I did the CPA thing, the formal request, the signature, related to the all-things-insurance, there was a press release by the Hampshire Council of Governments today, that they are dissolving as soon as they possibly can, and working with Western Mass Legislative Delegation to figure out how they dissolve. I will, I, I do have a little bit, but how it relates to, I'll just read three short statements, this is from the HCOG's press release that came out today. For more than two years, the Hampshire Council of Governments has been seeking a solution to unsustainable financial burden posed by the retirement and healthcare liabilities of former county employees. The financial structure has not worked as originally envisioned, and the organization has struggled to find sustainable revenue for most of its life. Recognizing that time to create a solution is limited, we have created a plan, are working to achieve it, and there are three steps, and one is to monetize the council's assets, and to pay off the resulting liabilities. Second, they're looking for partners to take on their successful programs. And finally, which is why I bring it to our attention, and it's interesting, it's at the same time of 21 and 22 being resolved, they plan to cease operations. This will include transferring responsibility for former county roles, most important is transferring the trusteeship of the Hampshire Group Insurance Trust to the Trust Insurance Advisory Committee. The trust is financially strong, and we believe our current trust agreement allows for this transfer. We learned of this as a municipality this morning, when our finance director, who is on the executive committee of the trust, was told that in, in the morning meeting. The details of what that means for us as trust members, we have been reassured that the insurance that we have and benefits will stay in place, and then the details will be, will be forthcoming of, of what that actually looks like, and what a timeline may be on the dissolution?
Dissolution.
Thank you. And, and what that means for, for the trust. Also, it'll be very interesting, I mean, the trusteeship that, that council of governments hold, very likely, from the statement, will shift to the IAC, which are the member units, and, and we'll see what that gives us as far as leveraging. All very new, to say the very least, but I did call all of the unions' presidents today to say, you might read this, this is separate than the entrust, and our benefits are in place, and the agreement that, that I presented to them, and we all crafted together, is still in effect, no fiscal impact. So, next. I did want to let the council know that I was elected as alternate sub-region three of the Pioneer Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization. This is important for several reasons. The MPO, as it's called, is, it's a body that's underneath the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, that approves federally funded transportation projects and road projects in Hampshire and Hampden County, including things such as Unified Planning Work Program, Regional Transportation Plan, and the Transportation Improvement Program. I sit on a board with actually the full vote, because Mayor Narcoitz, who is the primary vote in our sub-region, also represents PVTA as the chair of the PVTA Advisory Committee, so I get to vote for, I get to vote on the behalf of just the sub-region. That gives us two votes in our sub-region, which is great, and two mayor votes is even better. So I'm, I'm very fortunate to have been elected by my member communities to do that. It allows me to work in East Hampton, to have a greater impact on regionalization of transportation dollars, but also specific projects within East Hampton, because our city engineers work very closely, and do a lot of work with the Joint Transportation Committee, the JTC, which is the work group for this transportation project cohort. So they do a lot of the groundwork, they inform me, our vote is heard, it's stronger, it's allowing us to advocate for things like our current TIP project, which is Union Street, but also as we decide to put other projects on that TIP list. So that started last month, month, I can certainly give folks more information. Also, in the beginning of March, I was asked by Lieutenant Governor Polito and Governor Baker to join the municipal working group, this is a group of mayors, and select board members from across the Commonwealth, to meet and talk very specifically on municipal matters, and around long-term financial planning. They meet about once a month out in the State House, I, the first meeting, I actually participated by phone, but would love to get input from the community, but also the council, about what issues make the most sense to put forward. And again, I would thank the Lieutenant Governor and the governor for asking me to join the group, it's, it's really a great resource. Last, tonight, I, I present to you my proposed fiscal year 2020 budget. I would like to just read my short mayor message, and then distribute the budget books. Dear President McCoy and members of the city council, with great diligence and care, I submit the city of East Hampton's proposed budget for fiscal year 2020. My proposal details a balanced budget that includes funds for the general operation and maintenance of municipal government, education, and debt services. My approach is one of efficient stewardship and prudent allocation of taxpayer dollars on the behalf of all of our residents. Our city continues to diversify and grow economically, as well as culturally, but East Hampton must be positioned to withstand economic ebbs and flows. I am pleased to present a budget document that displays the full dynamism of our city's current fiscal operations and financial future. The city's future lies in strong, transparent fiscal management that controls liabilities and creates new revenue streams to create opportunity and equity for current residents, as well as generations to come. In my yearly budget letter to department heads, I ask them to carefully review all spending requests, using proactive budgeting strategies to best identify expenses most critical to delivering the necessary and desired services for East Hampton. This budget reflects their hard work as leaders who embrace these challenges head-on with innovative approaches and a long-term view. Based on, oop, my numbers, the proposed budget includes expenditures of 46, 800, ugh, 46, 884, $268 million, that are balanced by four major revenue sources, state receipts, net assessments of $8,886,390, local receipts of $3,622,175, other sources including CPA and enterprise, totaling $4,705,19, and the estimated tax levy of $29,675,184. Of the tax levy, $5,835,39,553, I assure you, this is all in writing, funds the voted debt exclusion for East Hampton High Maple School design, and Maple School pre-K to 8 construction. It is shown within the budget as dedicated revenue that offsets expenditures, which are recognized as excluded debt service. The fiscal year 2020 operating budget presents a 13.0% increase over last year's budget. Based on the governor's fiscal year 2020 proposed budget, East Hampton's net state aid decreased by .49%, and school choice and charter sending tuition increased by 8.35%. Our budget includes the expense of our first interest payment on the recently issued $50 million bond offering for our consolidated pre-K school of just over $5.5 million, as well as cyclical expenses of municipal elections, property reevaluation, and internal audits. Balancing the weight of the above fiscal factors, my administration successfully obtained the city's highest bond rating ever of AA+ from Standard &amp; Poor. The diligent work of our city's auditor, assessor, and finance director made our bond offering very competitive, resulting in lower interest rates and a savings of millions of, in interest costs over the life of the bond. For the taxpayer, the tax rate impact of the new school, based on today's evaluation and tax rate, will be well under $3. To further strengthen the city's fiscal management, I codified longstanding fiscal practices, consolidated municipal functions, and assertively went after smart growth grant dollars totaling $4.4 million in the last 14 months. Notably, we were awarded $3.51 million to redevelop One Ferry Street, expected to attract $40 million in private investment, and add several dozen housing units. Additionally, the $400,000 park grant, coupled with CPA funds, will preserve 11 acres on the side of Mount On that will have trails leading to an unparalleled view of the Pioneer Valley. To retain and attract talent to our municipal departments, I commissioned the Collins Center of UMass Boston to do a compensation and classification study. The resulting report details a path to pay equity within our city, and in comparison to communities around us. The same report is informing the process of updating municipal job descriptions in line with current professional requirements and responsibilities. My proposed budget reflects a prudent, steady, forward-looking fiscal approach to provide a better quality of life for all of our residents. With great respect, I thank each department head for their work on this budget document, especially Finance Director Melissa Wannacki. I am proud of the working partnership I have with city council, and I, bringing a balanced approach to our fiscal decisions as a city. In last year's budget, I spoke of the palpable energy and the strong intention of our residents to reaffirm our city's vibrancy and vitality. I promise to put in motion the intentional vision of our residents and community. Together, we have begun to make good on our collective commitment to leave our city a better place for generations to come. My humility and gratitude as your mayor has only deepened over the last year. Listening and asking questions has guided my representation and advocacy for East Hampton across the region, across the state, and the nation. I work to ensure East Hampton has the opportunity, tools, and resources to bring life to the vision we hold for our community, and I strive to be the mayor and fiscal steward that East Hampton deserves each and every day. Respectfully submitted, Nicola Chappelle, Mayor. With that, I will pass this on, this is, as you will see on the cover, everyone has a, a copy. This year, I put very plainly... On the plain cover, it says, "proposed." There are certainly typos, and also suggested vote language in the back, but it is proposed, we expect, of course, changes, and this document will be revised, and then finalized, that will be published as the final document. The proposed budget goes on the website tomorrow, so everyone can take a look at it. Once we have finalized and voted in the budget, this will be the document that goes forward to the Government Finance Association Award Committee, and we will pursue the budget award I spoke about last fiscal year, and to see if we've met their high standards. As well, this will be submitted to the state as an example of best practice in municipal government and leadership fiscal, and also fiscal leadership, and will stand on the best practices website for other communities to take a look at, for an example of how, how to keep refining that, that budget process. I'm done.
I mean, there's obviously plenty of time for discussion in finance, any very brief questions for the mayor at this point, or is this, okay, Council Rist?
I move that the...
I move that the budget as presented by the mayor be sent to the Finance Committee for review.
Second. Motion to second to move to finance the 2020 budget. Just your questions or comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. That concludes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that the public hearings be opened.
Second.
Motion to second open public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Counselor Wrist, I believe?
Yes, I am absent my notes, but I think from memory any other Finance Committee members can help me. The sixty-one-hundred dollars that's in front of you is requested by the Finance Director to cover an interest shortfall in the ban account, and I'd like her to explain it, but it's pretty much difficult for her to estimate the entire, the amount of the interest payment will be. A lot of factors go into it, and I'd ask her to come forward and just explain where the shortfall came from. Thank you.
So we have a, we have a ban that's for, what has four pieces in it, five pieces in it. It has part of the school design, a fire truck, an ambulance, dump truck that were authorized in eighteen, I believe, and the last piece of the complete streets. It's all rolled into one ban. It's roughly a little over one-point-six million dollars. It comes due May thirty-first, but because it's issued so late in the year, I'm reissuing it again in a few weeks. So I guess at what the interest is, and the interest had gone up at the end of last fiscal year, so I underestimated the cost of that. So we're gonna, bans don't require principal payments. It's something I schedule internally for myself, so I'm just moving it from the principal to the interest to make the payment and then refinance the balance. Also, on three of those projects, there were a little bit money left over. We borrowed the full amount of the authorization, but there was a few thousand dollars left in some of the projects, like the ambulance didn't cost three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. It cost, I mean, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. It cost three-hundred-and-forty-eight-something. And so that extra money, I'm just gonna close out the capital project and pay down the interest in the loan. So I really am not gonna short the principal payment of these borrowings at all. I'm just gonna reallocate the money to pay the interest on this loan and then, and I guessed again next year, so hopefully I...
You did better.
Hopefully, I aimed high this year for interest rates.
Thank you, because I don't think I could have done what you just did.
Any questions for the Finance Director, she's up there?
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have more to say, Counselor?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the city who would like to address this, or for the public who would like to comment on this interdepartmental transfer? Okay, Counselor Wrist, I'm ten motion.
I would just like to say the Finance Security approved this three to zero. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation by the full council. The amount requested is six-thousand-one-hundred dollars to be transferred from ban principal, six-thousand-one-hundred dollars, to be transferred to ban interest account, six-thousand-one-hundred dollars for the following purpose: interest expense.
Second.
Okay, motion second to approve the interdepartmental transfer of six-thousand-one-hundred dollars for interest expenses. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Did you want to continue on pay plan while you have finance?
All right. The, I will be requesting a continuance of the pay plan ordinance, public hearing, to the next meeting because the Finance Committee has not finished its review. There is a couple of things we are asking for. One of them, we did ask for and receive this evening, you all received a new Exhibit A with some amendments, including the removal of the Chief of Staff position from the exhibit. The committee felt that that position needed to be adopted first by the council and then put into the pay plan. So it's just a matter of process, so that's what we decided. We also are waiting on a little more information on city and town comparisons and the budget impact of this pay plan increase over the next two fiscal years, for instance. So we have a little more work to do, so I am gonna make a motion to continue, but if someone wants to speak to it tonight, that is their, of course.
I'll start. Anyone from the city who would like to speak to this, or anyone from the public who would like to, as I said, this public hearing is being continued to May first, but if you would like to say something. No, any counselors? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to...
I just had, I had a question about the Chief of Staff position that was removed and would need to be adopted. If that, let's, I'm just speaking speculatively, if that was considered to be adopted, would it be adopted in the place where it originally stood in the pay plan, or would it be, or would, could it be placed somewhere else within the pay plan?
It would be, that would all be part of the discussion.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify that, as seems to be a hot topic.
Anything else?
No.
Then I will make a motion to continue the public hearing on the city ordinance amendments for the classification and pay plan until the next meeting of the City Council.
Second.
Yeah, motion second to continue the public hearing on the pay plan classification until May first. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Okay, Public Safety, Counselor Gomez on Ferry Street.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a few requests from Verizon and Eversource. Basically, they wanna do a conduit and move, relocate some poles. We have the expert here that I think, right, Eversource and Verizon guys are here, so they can explain better what they're requesting. If you guys have any questions, that's the guy to ask.
Thank you. Welcome. If you could just state your name and obviously the company for the record, and then if you want, just give us a brief summary of...
Sure. Michael Rosenberg, East Street, Southampton, and I'm a representative of Eversource. So the project or the petition you have in front of you is to take the overhead utilities along the Lower Mill Pond water, I guess water side of the road, the south side, and to put them underground. So I think part of this is in conjunction with the reconfiguration project. I think part of it's in conjunction with the development across the street, development in the area. The, this is a joint petition. The poles themselves are owned and set by Verizon who are there, and we are just joint owners in those. With the petition, with everything going underground, we need to petition for an underground duck bank and a manhole in the center, and then Verizon is also petitioning for the same, so.
Okay. Counselors, any questions for Representative from... Counselor?
No questions.
Okay.
Just clarification. So one of the reasons why these poles are going to be removed is there's gonna be a multi-use path that's gonna go next to the pond, and I believe these conduits are gonna go in this, in the center of the road where we own, so we don't have to get further easements, and it's going to clean that area up, which is going to make it much more visually appealing. And it seems like the questions we asked, these conduits are gonna be similar to the conduits that were for the mill buildings and have a pretty high capacity and ability for growth.
So from the electric side, we will be installing, it's an eight-way duck bank, so eight ducts. We do that because with overhead construction, we're afforded the opportunity to put three circuits up there, along with secondaries and services and transformers. Once you go underground, you're underground, right? So we build for future capacity. It's kind of a twenty-year plan. So eight is a good reasonable number. We have a substation down in, you know, midway towards Northampton. We have gun roads. So if we ever need to do any circuit reconfiguration, we have the duct there to be able to do that. And it helps with us covering future load, any other issues that we may have in the area, so.
Okay. Counselor?
What will the project look like in regards to, I apologize if you already discussed this subcommittee, but in terms of how long this takes, potential disruption to traffic in the area and so forth, could you summarize that briefly? So our work, and this was a cost savings measure for the town, so we had asked the town through the general bid, general contractor process, to handle all of the civil work. So the general contractor who's awarded the job will do all the excavation, all of the duck bank install, the manhole procurement installation. It makes sense from a, from a financial and a schedule standpoint to have the guy with the excavator do all the digging in the street, right? So there will be traffic disruptions, but I think those disruptions are going to be not just for our trench, they're gonna be for water, for gas, for sewer, for everyone else kind of working in that corridor, because I think it might be full depth there and rebuild of the road. So, you know, timeline of construction, we're ready. I think we had like a six-week, six to eight-week lead time whenever, you know, for us to get ready to do the work. So when your GC is awarded, we'll coordinate and, you know, be able to work with them on the actual performance of the work. But the civil work itself will be performed by the city's general contractor for the project.
Okay. Other questions for, no more for Eversource? Okay, thank you very much. Verizon, do you have anything more to add to that, or do you want to clarify anything from your perspective?
Paul Davis, representing Verizon. Tonight, there are two petitions, one for poles and one for conduit. Very similar to what Mike just mentioned, two poles being petitioned are being moved to widen the view of the pond and also to work in association with the Community Improvement Project. Those poles being moved also will have conduit going to them with, again, like Mike said, a manhole in the middle. Verizon will have two conduit versus Eversource's eight, one for existing plant that's up in the air now and one as a spare for future, for future use. Other than that, it's basically it. The conduit, again, are gonna go in the street. The poles in between the two proposed poles tonight on the petition will be removed, so all those poles in between will be gone. All the aerial plant up in the air now will be underground, so they'll have a wide expanse view of that pond across the street from the development. So then that's basically it.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you for your time. Jeff, did you have, did you want to add something?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm Jeff Bag, the city planner, and I just wanted to try to respond to Counselor Zerat's question about the timeline. I think this is one of the first sort of outwardly facing steps for the Mass Works project, so this is actually an early stage of laying out the groundwork for the project. So we have, we are expecting to execute the Mass Works contract in the very near future, and once we do, we're setting in motion a series of activities that are all going to run concurrent timelines with different paths. So the gentleman from Verizon, you know, is here to start this pole petition process, because it's one of the, one of the two things that are necessary for Verizon to have this project placed on a construction schedule itself. So with the pole petition, presumably something that could be approved tonight, what the city needs to do with the first round of the Mass Works funding is pay Verizon the upfront costs of their work to lay the, you know, utilities underground. Once they are, have the payment and this pole petition project, then the project goes on to their construction schedule. So at this moment, we don't know when this construction is set to start. We do have Diane Rossini, who's the DPW staff engineer, who has been working on timelines. The best guess would be that sometime in late summer or early fall would be when we might expect to see the Ferry Street road be uncovered and the utilities start to get buried. Once they're installed, they'll be recovered, and then the focus of the project would be more on the intersection of Ferry Street and Pleasant Street with the Roundabout. So that'll be sort of the first round of activities. I think this is a little bit of a preview for a series of things that will continue to come to City Council to gear up for the project. There's another item on your agenda for tonight. There is a zoning amendment that is with ordinance and the planning board right now, which will ultimately come to the City Council for review. As we get a little bit further into the project, the City Council will review and approve reciprocal easements, which certain areas of this project have public uses on private property, so that will require easements. And I have a note here, there's one more thing. This is just by way of preview. There will also be the District Improvement Financing and TIF financial plan that will come to this board, which is part of the way that the project will be fully funded. So over the course of the next several months, we'll be seeing a lot of each other talking about the project. So I don't know if that answers your question with a little bit more, a little bit more direction.
I'd like to have a general contract.
Yeah, I'll just say yes. I like to say yes.
Mayor, did you have more to?
Yeah, I'd just like to speak to the issue. So the, certainly the complexity of the project, I think, is well-known and becomes better and better defined to us all at One Ferry Street, and I, if I have gleaned nothing else, as I talk to fellow mayors, but also folks in this room on both sides of the table on these projects, is that every step forward is a victory and should be celebrated, and they're very complicated. I would like to ask, urge the council to look upon these requests favorably. I think it is very important to note that both Eversource and Verizon being in this room and working so responsibly with us on this project, understanding the importance to our city and region, is quite remarkable, and we have a window of time to get some very important cost-saving work done. That work and the ground, kind of the groundwork for that was very well laid out by Diane Rossini, our, the staff engineer, with Jeff Bag and members of the Planning Department of how we can get as much done for bang for a buck, and I appreciate that. This is a lot of information coming at the council, and it will not be the first time that we'll come before you with really technical things. But again, this is a, is a great opportunity to save a lot of money, public money upfront, and get us jump-started. So thank you for the consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make any comments concerning this appropriation or conduit? Okay, Counselor? Counselor?
Jeff, if I may. It's a question for our planner and actually for Counselor Peak. As we move forward on this, and I'm thinking about the conduits being laid and lots of businesses and residences in the property, I presume, has there been any thought to future fiber optic cable access, and should we be thinking about laying whatever conduit in while the hole's open for the municipally-owned fiber optic cable?
Sure. I'll defer to the gentleman from Eversource, because I think we discussed that in subcommittee last night briefly.
So one of the reasons for the eight-way duct is to afford fiber companies the opportunity to go in a spare duct. We are very selective about sort of who we allow in electrical manholes. They have to be approved contractors, electrically qualified. But in, for instance, the city of Springfield, you know, there's fiber everywhere, right, but there's no poles. It's running through our duct system in some areas, Verizon's in others. So part of the reason for the eight-way duct is to kind of plan for the future expansion, and if you go the private route or if, if someone else needs to be in there, so.
And so the agreement calls for access by the city for using your conduit?
The agreement does not, no. So that would be a request. So it'd be a third-party application request, so similar to an overhead construction. If a private utility wants to attach, they apply to us to attach in those locations. We survey the overhead poles. Similar to the manhole situation, an application comes forward. We survey the manhole to see the condition and what's in there. Obviously, this one will be new, so there's not much to look at or to be worried about. And then we, we work with, you know, the conduit that can be utilized, where you'd be raising up on the poles, those types of things, so.
And there's no charge to the community for that process or for the usage of your equipment, your conduit?
No. So the one thing I will say, so with the overhead applications, it's fifty dollars a location for survey. We may be talking three locations here, right? So it's minimal, and I don't think...
But it's not like a rental fee or a lease fee or a usage fee?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't deal with a lot of duct installations in Springfield, but...
Thank you.
Okay.
Actually, can we get Jeff back up first?
Okay.
Yes. It does bring up an interesting point that I guess I didn't think about last night. If our GC is doing the duct installation, I mean, would it be outrageous for us to add, so there's ten going in now, to add one that was just a municipal duct? add, so there's ten going in now, to add one that was just a municipal duct? I mean, and would we have, we wouldn't have to necessarily get permission from anybody to do that, would we? Sorry. Is this?
I believe that it would have to be something that would be researched. I mean, I think that the, the grant, the Mass Works grant that was submitted always anticipated the burial of the utilities here. I think as the gentleman just spoke, there will be empty conduits available. So, I don't think that it, I mean, just responding to this question off the cuff, is that it doesn't seem to make sense to add an additional opportunity when there already will be an opportunity there. So, I think for a hundred and fifty dollar application fee, the opportunity will be there if and when fiber is available.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, I'll, I'll start councillor's first.
Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's already, was it dark fiber running throughout the city on, on all the poles?
Yeah, a lot of places, yeah.
So, is there a plan to already just run the dark fiber that exists in the city? Because there's already fiber telecommunications, all the fiber optic stuff being used in businesses, right?
At some point, there was a site visit with not, not only Verizon, EverSource and Columbia Gas, D P W. We discussed there is some line up there that wasn't really known. I would defer to, I mean, this is, my understanding of this process currently is that you're being asked to approve the, the petition. I think that nothing, that your approval of this petition tonight does not preclude some adjustments along the way to accommodate something that, so if there is fiber running along Ferry Street and needs to be incorporated, I don't know how that would work, but.
If it's already existing there, it should just be buried with everything else, no?
Right. So, there was also Comcast, right, or, or Charter. So, there is, there is at least this discussion of other utilities who, you know, we've coordinated with the larger companies who have to pull all the utilities underground. So, if you can bring this along a thought process of Charter, they'll be contacted and they'll have to be coordinated with to bury while the street is opened.
The reason we're talking to EverSource and Verizon right now is they're the ones who own the poles.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Councillor Gomez.
Before I make the motion, I want to say thanks to Jeff and the representative from Verizon and EverSource. But I want to ask you something and for the favor of all the councillors. Why is so important for us to approve the resolution for the easement?
So, the resolution for the easement is slightly different. The, there are two items before the council tonight. So, the pole petition and conduit petition are subject to the public hearing, and then there will be another matter that, from my understanding, is not subject to a public hearing, but is a request for the developer to have an easement across the city-owned property. And I have some, I do have some illustrations and there was some other maps. I think it's a separate discussion, if I may. I think it's.
We have in the public hearing.
It's in the public hearing.
I think it was potentially put there, yeah. So, if it's something that wants to be discussed now, I'm fine with that, but it is separate from the public hearing.
I would do a separate, because they're separate items. Do this, and then you go on to the easement.
Today, okay.
Yeah, do these.
Okay.
I would be happy to answer that question after.
Okay, yeah, I just was thinking to, to do all the public hearing and then all do by motion one by one, so that's why I'm asking now.
Yeah, I would do these three.
Okay, I can do that.
And then do that.
Okay, sure. All right, I'll do that.
Okay. Thank you. And I think I already asked if any public wants to address this. Okay, councillor Gomez, entertain a motion.
First, for the two joint-owned poles, I move that the City Council approve the relocation of one jointly-owned pole, number T point two slash E, E point four, to point of the southern, southern side of the Ferry Street, approximately one hundred and ninety-three feet, easterly from the center line of the Pleasant Street and Love Field Street. And, and the relocation of one jointly-owned pole, number T point six E slash point A, to a point of the souther, southern side of Ferry Street, approximately three hundred and eighty-three feet, eighty-three feet, easterly from the center line of Pleasant Street and Love, and Love Field Street, to accommodate to a city of Isambton construction project and to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications and for the transmission of high and low voltage electric current. And also, that the petitioner agrees to reserve space for one cross-arm at suitable point on each of say, say, set poles for the fire and police telephone signals wires belonging to the municipal and use, but exclusive, exclusive for municipal purpose.
Second. Okay. So, motion a second for the previous wed joint utility request for two pole locations. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
So, for the Verizon conduit, I move that the City Council approve the installation of one four-inch conduit on Ferry Street, beginning at pole T point two, located on the southern side of Ferry Street, and the running in an easterly direction along to the southern side of Ferry Street, a distance approximately four hundred and ninety feet to pole T point A, located on the southern side of Ferry Street, to accommodate a city of Isambton construction and to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications.
Second. Okay, a motion a second for the Verizon conduit location. Questions, additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
For the EverSource duct bank, I move that the City Council approve the installation of a four hundred and ninety-eight weight duct bank for pole, fifty-eight slash four to fifty-eight slash eight, with a five-feet-by-ten-feet-by-ten-feet manhole in the middle of the duct run, all dimension from future center line of the road, to facilitate the Ferry Street corridor reconstruction.
Second. Okay, a motion a second to prove for the EverSource conduit duct bank. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes. And is the last one the, the resolution?
Yes.
Does he have to read the whole resolution? Okay. Okay. Didn't go on the.
Yes, and is a request on the, is an easement request over the city property for electrical sewer connection to build, to the building at one Ferry Street. We have Jeff Bag here, the, he can talk a little bit more about it.
Okay. Yeah, we talked about the easement now.
Was this your question about the importance of it?
Yes. Now is the time to.
And so, I can try to put up an illustration if it's useful to the board. Has a, has a couple of illustrations in the, in their packet. So, what is, this, this discussion is, is slightly different. About two months ago, the City Council approved a pole relocation to set a new pole. If you're standing on Pleasant Street looking at one Ferry, that first building is called Building One. So, a new pole was set, or was approved to be set. And the current request is, on behalf, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of the developer to bridge the gap with the city. The desire is to bury electric power across two city properties. So, again, if you're standing on the bike path looking at Building One, that's city property almost to the property line of the building. So, the request is for an easement for EverSource to bury the electrical power to a transformer, which would then connect to Building One. And then separately, there's a request for an easement for a sewer line to come off of the city sewer main to traverse the same city parcel and connect to Buildings Five and Buildings Seven. If you are not aware, that the city sewer line runs basically under the bike path. And so, that is the city's property, and so the request is for a line to come off the main line to connect to these two buildings. So, the Director of Public Works has already expressed that the city does not want to own a new sewer line extending off of this, so it's a subject of an easement. The discussions have been to try to advance these two approvals, so that as soon as the project is ready to commence, that Building One will have power, and then the easements will be in place for the water, for the two sewer lines. The resolution that's in front of the council is to acknowledge the importance of the project overall, to acknowledge that the project needs these two easements, and to acknowledge that you, as the council, would grant the authority to the mayor to execute the actual easement document. So, the biggest constraint that the developer is up against is that the easement language and for EverSource gets drafted by EverSource on their timeline and on their schedule. And so, we are trying to have the resolution approved, so that the mayor can execute the easement when it's, when it's ready. So, what we're trying to do is offer the flexibility and the opportunity to move this to this point in time, to have the easement approved in concept, and then have the mayor execute it when it's, when it's drafted.
Okay. Is, anyone else, the mayor, did you want to comment anymore on this, or?
I would, again, speaking just to the importance of, of the project, I think we've all heard the, the phrase, and certainly some on the council note very well, you know, real estate is all about location, location, location. In this circumstance, I would say that development is all about timing, timing, timing. And the resolution puts before you a very small consideration that allows us to time EverSource's work with Verizon as a very key piece of, of land. We need to create the easement. It also allows the city to avoid and make very clear with the developer that we're not taking on new public, we're not making something that shouldn't be public infrastructure, public infrastructure. And it's just a little bit of shifting sand about what that actually looks like on the easement, again, the language from, from EverSource. So, we, praying, you know, putting our ducks in a row.
Any questions for you, the city planner, the mayor, from the councillors?
So, there'll be no public infrastructure in your agreement should you execute one? Is that what you're saying? Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, I mean, it, it goes around the, I'm saying with the sewer and whatnot. We don't want something to be created new.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no. No, no, we, we got enough. Come to, come to the Board of Public Works.
Oh, yeah.
Got a lot going on.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Okay, anyone from the public who'd like to address the council on this topic? Your chance. Okay, councillor Gomez, entertain a motion.
I move that the City Council approve the resolution to grant certain utility easement relative to the redevelopment of one Ferry Street, Isambton, Massachusetts, out rising, out rising the mayor to negotiate, execute, execute and record perpetual easement agreement over real estate owned by the city of Isambton for the provision of electric service, services to Building One at one Ferry Street, Isambton, Massachusetts, in the area marked at prox EverSource easement area, on the plan labeled as Exhibit A, and the run and connect sewer lines to Buildings Five and Seven and one Ferry Street, to the existing municipal sewer lines in the area marked at prox sewer easement area, on the plan of land label as Exhibit B.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion a second for the resolution to grant certain utility easements relative to redevelopment of one Ferry Street. No questions or comments? Councillor Derby.
I have a comment, and you're probably going to hear me say this over the course of these things that we're getting related to this project. I didn't take the time to fully appreciate it the first time we did this, when we were redoing the back of the mills, and how important this is. And sometimes these little things that seem like minutia end up adding up to something that's really special. And I think that this is an exciting time for us to be on the council and to be able to be involved with this. And I think that this, we're going to see, as this moves forward, and as these things come to fruition, I think we're going to be pleasantly surprised at the outcome. I think this is a great opportunity for our city. I just wanted to say that.
Great. I can still remember when I first came on council, you probably saw me too, the drawings of what this was going to look like, and to have it disappear and then to have it see it come back again is really exciting. Okay, councillor Gomez, entertain a motion. Oh, you said motion, okay, I'm sorry. Sorry, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
Mr. President, I move that the public hearings be closed.
A motion a second to close public hearings, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes. Councillor Rist.
Report from the Finance Committee. First, I would like to make a motion, but before I do that, I want to thank all of our collective bargaining units, I'm glad, and the Tyree, the committee. I have been pushing all along to get this negotiated rather than have twenty-one and twenty-two become an issue before this council, which would have to make a very difficult decision. I want to thank everybody involved. As councillor Kozinski said, this is the way it should be in cities and towns, and it was never the intent of this councillor to restrict collective bargaining in any way. But it placed up, placed myself in a difficult position, not wanting to spend a tremendous amount of money for the city. And this is the way it happened, and I'm happy it happened that way. And I think my efforts to push for negotiation may have paid off, and I'm very happy to make a motion to remove Master General Chapter thirty-two B, Sections twenty-one and twenty-two, from the Finance Committee agenda.
Second. A motion a second to remove from Finance Committee agenda the topic of Chapter thirty-two B, Sections twenty-one and twenty-two. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain?
Obstain.
One abstention? Oh, right.
Okay, now I'm going to also.
Oh.
I wonder, okay, sorry. And three abstentions, three abstentions. Thank you, councillor Kozinski.
So, there are six to three, zero, three, okay. All right, I would like to also move to the Finance Committee, the new business. I've got to get to the page. First item. No, I got it. First item is in the form of a first reading is, a request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation, six thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars, to be transferred from the reserve fund, six thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars, to be transferred to workers' compensation, six thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars, for the following purpose, for payment of additional workers' compensation after audit of wages actually paid.
Second.
No, I didn't make the motion. I'm moving, I'm going to move all three of them at once.
Oh, okay.
The second item is, the request is hereby made for the following appropriation to cover snow and ice deficit. The amount requested is one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to be transferred from the free cash account, to be transferred to snow and ice overtime account, fifteen thousand. Rental equipment account, thirty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Chemicals account, sixteen thousand dollars. Salt account, ninety-five thousand four hundred and ten dollars. And school plowing, eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. We use for the following purpose to cover the snow and ice deficit in accordance with the city's free cash financial policy, free cash priority number four, extraordinary deficits, to fund potential deficits that would otherwise be carried over to the following fiscal year. Continuing. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation. The amount requested is six thousand dollars to be appropriated from the C P A Reserve for Open Space Account, six thousand dollars, to be appropriated to the Nantucket Park pickleball court design account, six thousand dollars. The amount requested for the following purpose, that for design phase, prepare construction plans, cost estimates, bid documents and specifications, and bidding and construction oversight for capital improvement, to create two new pickleball courts in Nantucket Park near the soccer complex. And lastly, request is hereby made for the following appropriation. The amount requested is thirty thousand dollars to be appropriated from the C P A Reserve for Open Space, thirty thousand dollars, to be appropriated to the Nantucket Park Stonehouse Bathroom Design Account, thirty thousand dollars, for the purpose of, the design phase, prepare construction plans, cost estimates, bid documents and specifications, and bidding and construction oversight for capital improvement, to rehabilitate the historic stonehouse into bathrooms for the Nantucket Park Daily Field Recreation Facility. I move that the aforementioned four items be sent to Finance Committee for review.
Second. Okay, a motion a second to move to finance, the interdepartmental transfer of the three supplemental appropriations to finance. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes.
I would like to make a motion to set a public hearing for the four aforementioned items for the next council meeting in these chambers at six fifteen.
Okay, a second for make, public hearings for the aforementioned financial topics on May first, six fifteen P M, these chambers. Additional questions or comments? All those in. All those in favor?
Who seconded that?
Uh, Tumpy.
Okay, sorry, Tumpy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
I make these with the hope that the Finance Committee can get these done because we're going to be up against budget hearings, and I'm thinking that, I'm hoping they're not too controversial that we can't get them done at one meeting. And that meeting will take place next week at 5:00 in these chambers where we will go over this and hopefully conclude our discussions of the pay plan review. Lastly, I would ask that I will be in touch with the mayor if she could check with her department heads. I would like on that agenda to schedule budget hearings. So I'd need to know who's available when and maybe have some alternate dates. I don't want to do a lot of big departments on one night. So if you could find out who's available when, that would be great.
Absolutely.
That concludes.
Okay, Public Safety, Council Gomez.
Mr. President, we had a meeting yesterday, basically was to talk about Eversource, Verizon, about the poles and the easement and the conduit. We already talked about that at the public hearing. Besides that was a long discussion about the flags and the crosswalks. Everybody, they show up and our meeting was in favor of it, and they make a few questions. Luckily, the mayor was there to answer most of them. We receive, the Public Safety Security Committee members, we received at least two emails from residents of East Hampton complaining about those flags. The flags in those crosswalks is a temporary solution. That's my understanding from everybody, including the mayor. Union Street and Cores Street, they're going to rebuild their streets, and as soon as those streets are fixed, those flags have to be gone. But I think this group is doing a pretty good job trying to protect everybody's life after what happened in Cores Street. Basically, that's the purpose of the flags. And, yeah, it was a long discussion, and all of them was in favor. None, none of the two persons, they sent emails to us, again, the flags show up. So we don't have any perspective from them beside the emails. Besides that, I just want to ask for a 90-day extension for the review on street parking restriction and the traffic rules and order.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second for 90-day extension for the traffic rules and orders. And what was the second one? The Fox Run?
No, I'm going to talk about that now.
Oh, okay, okay. So a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
So, last meeting, last full city council meeting, I give you kind of package with the info of what we request for, to the acceptance of Fox Run Street. We was waiting just for the signing of the deed. We finally have it. So, but before that, I just want to make a comment. I definitely thanks to Mr., I have his name here, the person who was talking about former place.
Budnick.
Budnick. I appreciate that he was here, because he's right. We're going to accept now, I mean, if you vote in favor, we're going to accept now a new street in our city. But I love the idea to accepting the new street. But definitely, we have to take care of every single street in our city, and it's unacceptable that we have a street in downtown that is not paved. I know that the budget is tight, and I know the DPW have a lot of work to do, but definitely it's unacceptable that we have a street in our city that is unpaved. And these people are paying taxes. These people deserve better in front of their houses. Besides that, I want to make a motion. I move pursuant to the applicable provision of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41 and 82, the city council approve the layout of a new public way to be known as a Fox Run and to accept the deed in conformance thereto.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second to accept Fox Run as a public way. Additional questions or comments?
I mean, I'll make a comment quickly now, mostly not regards to, well, regards to what Counsel Gomez said. I've had many communications with Mr. Budnick, and since the topic was brought up and he appeared at public speak, that I do agree that in the center of the city, and I don't have all the details about that space and how it was adopted as a city street, or if it's always been a city street, but I do agree that that's something that needs to be looked at. And I know this is not necessarily the conversation right now, but I have been advocating for him with multiple emails to the city and the DPW, and I do agree that in adopting another currently private way as a public way, we need to look at our existing public ways and make sure that they're appropriately maintained and paved, et cetera, so.
Okay, again, let's try to keep this just to Fox Run.
I understand.
I just, a question in general. Things of this nature, so that we don't end up talking about them in this forum, would it not be appropriate to, rather than continually say that someone has brought forth endlessly these kinds of things, to put something together so that we can react to it? Would that not be a better use of our time to have something that we can, put on the agenda that we can talk to? So I think that would be the next best scenario. Like, because right now, we're just talking about it theoretically, that, oh, my God, roads are horrible. And that doesn't move anything forward.
Yeah.
So if, if there is an answer...
Okay. Once again, I'd like to keep this to Fox Run. Are you talking about roads in general or talking about Fox Run?
I'm talking about in general.
Okay. So let's try to get back to Fox Run.
Okay.
Because that's what the motion's about, about accepting Fox Run.
All right.
I mean, these are all valid points, but I don't think it's appropriate this time. Counsel Pete.
So this is, I believe, my first time since getting sworn in that we have accepted a public road. I was just wondering, like, what is the, what's the advantage to the city of doing so? And what's the liability associated with accepting new infrastructure?
Well, that's a question on the motion, that's fine.
Right. There's a motion, a second, I just have a question.
I think it's still the discussion part.
There's discussion, but because the planner may have some comments about the subject.
You want me to withdraw the motion so that we can talk?
Let me just get a nod. Jeff, can you add more to this?
I can, I think I can.
Okay. Okay, so why don't we withdraw the motion?
Withdraw the motion.
And the second as well, whatever that was.
Draw the second.
Okay, city planner, if you don't mind just filling in that information for us, that would be terrific.
Thanks, Jeff Bagby, city planner. I think what is important at the moment, hearing that discussion, is making sure that you're talking apples to apples. And I don't think, I don't think the situation is apples to apples at the moment. You have some kind of historic street that has long been established, so that's kind of apples. I think oranges is Fox Run, so the nature of Mr. Peak's question is that it's a subdivision. So the subdivision control law in Massachusetts allows a developer to propose a subdivision via the planning board. And these subdivisions are generally by right. So unless there's some significant problem with the layout of the subdivision, they are accepted. They are approved, endorsed by the planning board, and through that process, the end result is always that the city would accept the road as a public way.
So there's an implicit agreement that at the end, we...
Correct. Correct. And I think the process with Fox Run was a rather long build-out. The road was completed. A couple of years went by, the developer needed to make some corrections before the city, you know, the city engineer, the DPW went out and did the inspection to make sure that it was adequate for their purposes, and then made the recommendation for the city council to accept this street as a public way. So it's a very general process that's, that's normal and expected when you're talking about a subdivision.
I saw, Counsel Riss first.
Just to make a comment, we've had these discussions over the years regarding snowplowing, et cetera. These residents are paying taxes, and if we don't own the street, that becomes a little legal issue between whether we could snowplow that street or continue to snowplow it. And we've had in the past discussions of plowing streets that haven't been accepted, and we go ahead and do that anyway, but it's much better for us to have the street accepted as our street if we're going to be the ones responsible for snowplowing it. That was one item that was always debated in the past.
That's how Chapter 90 funds are calculated as well.
Exactly. The more we have approved roads to the city.
So, so does the Chapter 90 funds plus the, like, does that offset the, whatever liabilities we're going to have from having to maintain the public way? Did you see what I'm, I mean, maybe I'm totally off base here, but...
But I, I, I mean, I think it's the same as the other street that we have in our city.
Yeah, this has come up before, and like, the idea of a non, of a non-adopted street, of us not plowing or taking care of liability for us, you know, if there was a fire and we couldn't get fire trucks there. So there is, I think from the city perspective, there is that to consider, but also that, you know, I think as Jeff mentioned too, it's implicit when you, you know, put in a development that we will adopt, assuming they meet the requirements they need to meet. And then it's also advantageous for the city because it continues to their mile as they have of approved roads in the city towards Chapter 90 funding. Did that answer your question? Doesn't look like it.
I don't think, I don't think the city of East Hampton has experienced significant growth in many years in terms of subdivision roads. So the addition, the acceptance of, you know, Fox Run is not a very long street. It's not adding a significant burden to the city's DPW. There are communities in Central Mass, for example, that are growing exponentially via subdivisions. And I think at a, at a fast pace of development, the cost of the city or town would probably be more than is generated by the taxes. But I don't think any, Samton, the amount of growth that we've had has been very minimal in terms of subdivision roads.
I'm not against, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the, like, the, this process before I take a vote. Okay.
Counsel Riss?
Just a moment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I have got to, yeah, I'm sorry.
Counsel Kozinski should be expressed. I yield.
I appreciate the planner's comments. I just wanted to expound just a little bit more for Counsel Pete. The subdivision doesn't automatically get approved. It is implicit that it is, will be approved, provided that the developer meets the standards and requirements of the build-out and that that build-out is inspected by city officials to meet those standards. So example, for example, if the manhole had dropped six inches or three inches, that would be a reason to say back to the developer, like, fix this item so that we can approve a street that is in good condition when we accept it. So there are, and believe me, there always are items that the punch list just doesn't ever seem to get finished. But we make it get finished, and then we accept the streets.
Okay. Counsel Riss.
Was there somebody else?
No, I think, I think you're right.
The one thing that I'll say is this process at the planning board, to say, when the planning department begins, gets a request for a development, that's where it begins. Once the planning process happens and we accept a subdivision, we are required by law, as he said, to follow through with purchasing, accepting the street eventually, if it meets all requirements. But this process, which I don't know how long ago it started, make sure that streets get done correctly and are paved, which is a great way of making sure that when we accept a street, we're accepting a street that is in good condition when it's accepted, that it has all of the necessary utilities and everything else, and is properly paved, curbing and all that. I don't know how the street that we were talking about earlier, I forget the name, but now, Pomeroy? It's, it's, that, how that became to be when those homes were built, but it might have been a century ago. But now, the process, that won't happen, which is, makes me feel good. Our planning process, make sure, if we're going to accept a street, it's ready to go.
Okay.
So we can plow it without digging up the dirt. Anyway, I'm done with that.
Okay, so...
Back to the motion.
Yes. I have to read the motion.
Yes.
All right. I move that pursuant to the applicable provision of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41 and 82, the city council approve the layout of a new public way to be known as Fox Run and to accept the deed in conformance thereto.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second to accept Fox Run as a public way. I think we've gone through our comments and questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
That concludes.
Okay, that concludes. Appointments, Counsel Coniff.
So we did not have a meeting this evening. We had no appointments to approve, so I will move forward with new appointments. We have three appointments that I'd like to move to subcommittee. Thomas Malsbury of the Board of Public Works with a term expiration 12/31/2019. Elodie Chicoine for the Agricultural Commission, expiration 12/31/2021. And Thelma Isri for the Veterans Council, 12/31/2021. Move those to, motion to move those to subcommittee.
Second.
Motion, a second to move the previous red names to Appointments Subcommittee for Board Committee Consideration. Additional questions or comments?
Question?
Counsel Zerat?
The short term, is that, is he filling in for someone who's leaving?
I think that's for Mr. McCoy.
Yes.
Okay, that's why, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
So, all those, a second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
We have our next meeting on Wednesday, May 1st at 5:30. Thus concludes.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance, Counsel Derby.
Mr. President, we met on the 9th last Tuesday, and we're checking away at the things that we have. At this moment, we have two things that are running congruent with our subcommittee and the planning board, which is the zero lot lines and the cannabis equity ordinance. So those are ongoing. Tomorrow night, we are doing a site visit. So that is tomorrow, the 18th of April at 5:30. The site visit is going to be at the parking lot at Route 5 for the bike trail, where we are going to look at the mobile multi-passenger bike. And we also, just so people who are following the welcoming trust ordinance, we are shooting to set the public hearing for that for the 15th, but I'm not going to set it until I have the attorney's review.
Counsel Riss? I repeat my request to see whatever was sent to the city attorney. We did not get that, the full council ordinance. If you could have, I don't know if the clerk can send it to us. I appreciate it.
Okay. That concludes, right? Okay. Property, Counsel Kozinski.
No report this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I believe we, I'd like to request a 90-day extension to the item on our agenda.
I was going to have a discussion with, yeah, well, let's do that. Yeah, I take that.
I'd like to request a 90-day extension, the request inventory city-owned property.
Second. Okay.
Thank you.
A motion, a second to, for 90-day extension on the request inventory city-owned property. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
That concludes.
That concludes. Rules and regulations, Counsel Peak.
Mr. President, for the first time since I became chair, I have nothing to report.
Isn't that... Counsel Riss?
I would like to announce to the, having been the chair of rules for a long time, Robert's rules require us, when we have our rules and we don't have a rule written, we bounce down to Robert's rules. Robert's rules requires if a motion's on the floor, only the body can speak to it. I am going to propose a rule for the committee for the next meeting that allows the council to ask city officials for comment, just to make it a little more efficient, so we don't have to put a motion on the floor and take it off and put it back on again. This is just to make it efficient. I've been always thinking about it, and it happened again tonight, so I'm going to try and write a rule that allows us to do that, because we can make our own rules with regard to that. The Robert's rules was to make it possible for discussion just here, but if we need more information, we should be able to get it without having to go through that option.
Okay, and you're going to put that right in the...
I'm going to submit that in writing and put it, and I'm sorry, Tom, you're going to have to deal with it.
Okay, Charter Review Committee, Counsel Riss.
Oh, me again. Yeah, I'd like to announce that we have sent, we, I've asked the president for permission to send, that was an email.
Yeah, I got it.
All right. To send to the city attorney our first action, which would require ballots, ballot questions. And that is because we are worried about the timing of getting it done by September. It has to go to the legislature and everything. I would like to announce that because of new information and a desire to make sure we do it right, we reopened ranked choice voting, and we decided to add single winner races for not just the mayor but for precinct councilors as well, because they can be asked in separate questions. So if someone doesn't want to do it all, one doesn't bump the other. So that was approved seven to zero, to add that to the language at the last meeting. We also moved some things to transitional clauses, which we felt were necessary, and did a little amending of that, those transitional lang... did a little amending of that, those transitional language, so that ranked choice voting, it had a budget requirement on it, and that was restricted to the first election. In other words, if the mayor didn't have the money, because there's a one-time expense for software and everything, I'll explain that, but that would be only for the first time that ranked choice voting could be used. Anyway, I will be sending that to the full council for the council's approval as soon as I get it back from the city attorney, in case there's language changes that we need to adopt because he says something's wrong. And once it gets to the full council, I get it back, I'll set a public hearing. I'm afraid we may be bumping into June, I don't know when that'll be, but I have, the city attorney probably has a lot on his plate, so we'll see what happens.
Okay.
And we'll be meeting next week to continue our discussing of Article 6. We've invited the Board of Public Works to come. Stan McCoy, who's the current chair, will be attending, because we're discussing.
He's not in work.
Yeah. But that's, he'll be there.
The former chair.
Former chair.
Will be there to discuss. Okay, thank you, that's next week.
Okay, and I believe we've got, no, we have no old business and done the new business, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. A second. A motion, a second adjourned, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes, see you May 1st.